Okay, we're going to get the meeting started. This is the Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee meeting for May 15, 2018. Welcome, everybody. Us plus three. It's a special meeting tonight. We have one item on the agenda, and it's Agenda Bill 7344, Central Issaquah District Visions Regarding the Development Moratorium. And I think the committee, as well as presenter Keith Nibbin, Economic and Development Services Director, anticipates that this is possibly the night that the committee will make a recommendation to the full council regarding the visions, since we've been working on this for a while, and it looks like we might have nearly final edits done. So Keith, kick us off.
Okay. So last time we met was May 3, and I appreciated the committee, kind of their fortitude to get through all of the developer obligations. So you guys went through all of them. I took notes. I went back and watched it again to try and make sure that I captured all of the suggested edits that you guys made. And so what I'd like to do, I guess, is start with the updated version of the developer obligations and the green necklace. So we also talked about this. We spent actually quite a bit of time talking about the green necklace. And what I took away from the meeting was that we agreed that we should, in the visions, have kind of the general graphic for the green necklace. And then previously, the first two paragraphs were here, and what I did was add the third paragraph, which says, "The green necklace, part of the city's park plan, provides a greater level of detail and expectation for Central Issaquah's relationship with its green spaces and amenities. Each neighborhood lists developer obligations and city actions that will need to be reconciled with the most current version of the city's park plan." So that was my kind of connective thread back to a plan which might continue to evolve over time separately from Central Issaquah.
So thank you for that. I know this has gone through a few versions, and for me, I like the version where there is the legends, because I think otherwise we don't know what these lines are. And in this version, it's gone away, and it also, I think, two other things that previously, this text, which is illegible, was just whited out, and so I think that's good. I can't read it, anyway. Maybe it's the text at the bottom of the figure.
Oh, 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 yes.
And it's sort of cut off and illegible. And previously, that was just whited out. And then previously, it said, "Matrix of specific projects will be included in the parks strategic plan." So it just directs you, if you want to know more, to the parks strategic plan. So I would just recommend reinstating those things.
Okay.
But otherwise, I think that the, I think that this is an appropriate level of detail in the text, and I appreciate the last part there.
So I think the city's park plan needs to be referred to as a draft park plan right now.
Okay.
And last sentence should say, "With the most current version of the parks plan when adopted," or something, just to, we don't have one right now.
Okay.
And then the first sentence is incorrect. It says, "The green necklace, part of the city's park plan, provides a greater level of detail and expectation." So is the greater level of detail in the parks plan, or is it in the green necklace?
The green necklace provides the greater level of detail.
The green necklace?
Provides. So the green necklace is part of the city's park plan, and it provides a greater level of detail, of expectation for central.
Sure those are the right words, then.
I see the confusion. So it's, I mean, it's used as the connection of trails earlier, right?
Yeah.
This is the jewels, and the strands of the necklace are the trails, and the jewels are the parks. So that's, but then also, we're referring to it kind of as a document.
Okay.
So I think, yeah, I think to reconcile that, you would just say the description of the green necklace in the city's parks plan, or the relevant documentation of the green necklace and the.
The description of the green necklace, comma, part of the city's park, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
So I wasn't here at the last meeting, and for that, I apologize. So the last time I was here, I had made the suggestion about putting the neighborhood-specific elements of the green necklace in under city, whatever the thing after developer obligations was.
Under city expectations?
Yes. To have them called out here. But it was, then the decision was made that it was best just to refer this in whole to the parks plan?
I think so. I think part of it was just the lack of predictability of the outcome for the parks plan. I mean, now that you guys had the meeting last night, the workshop last night, where there was, I think, some very positive comments back to the Parks Department regarding the plan, it feels a little bit more baked. But a month ago, that request seemed a little bit far out in front of ourselves, and so did not do that. What we did, so I can do that if part of this, well, that's a heavy lift. So part of this would be, what we did is, we went in the developer obligations, and we connected some of those to the park plan, or to the green necklace specifically by changing some of the wording. But I did not go back through the neighborhoods and look at the city expectations for each neighborhood, and pull out the things from the draft park plan, and identify, and make sure that they were represented. If that's something you want me to do, I can do that.
Well, the, I mean, the argument had been to, so it could be decoupled from the parks plan, so that the elements of the green necklace that would be ostensibly more stable than, I mean, as a document for approval, that the green necklace pieces could have been in this. But I sort of think what you just said about how the parks plan is further along may actually be an argument to not do it, that if the parks plan is farther along. But the original intent was to say, whatever happens with the park plan, these things from the green necklace should be in our vision.
Right, right.
So Stacy, I will leave it up to you.
I think what you said last was more along the lines of what the committee was discussing last time, references to, references to it, rather than express language being incorporated in this document, because it's not adopted yet. We also talked about, help me here, we also talked about taking the language in the parks plan when it is adopted, and then in putting it in this document as a chapter, so that there was a more direct reference, and larger reference to it, if I'm remembering just from eight days ago.
So my memory is that we looked at a, I think it was about 20 pages, it was pretty substantial documentation of the green necklace, and how it related to different neighborhoods, but really focused on that. So it was separate, and one of the things that we talked about is, there is very different language used in that document, and it's inconsistent with, and the style is also inconsistent with the visions document. And so we elected to not incorporate that as a chapter, but rather to refer to the parks plan, and then to attempt, my recollection is to attempt to make sure that things like connections are referred to in the city actions, and also in the developer obligations where appropriate in the different neighborhoods.
And one of the things that we did talk about as well, just to get council member marts completely caught up, assuming I can find it, Central Issaquah Development and Design, Chapter 7. So here's the SIDS, and this is, we talked about this a bit last time, is so Chapter 7.2 is titled "The Green Necklace," and it has, it's basically the subsection A and subsection B, and that's it. And so what we talked about is, you know, when that reconciliation piece happens, you know, are we going to go into the SIDS and actually fix this piece to make it reconcile with the green necklace that's in the current draft park plan? And my suggestion would be yes. I think that's what needs to happen, and then it gets codified, because then it's on the same plane as that map that Paul kept referencing, which was the street map, saying, okay, here's, this shows a street connecting here where the one doesn't exist, so you can tell a developer, that's what I want. Similarly, now we have this document with trails and other connections, which we can say, okay, clearly, we've got to have that conversation.
Thank you.
So I'm moving down, then. So, okay, so this is all new language for you guys, because, but hopefully, it's consistent with what we agreed upon last time. And there's similar language in each neighborhood for certain things. So you'll see, you know, so if, for example, 1.1 under West Newport, which is, "Provide amenities, e.g., parks, trails, plazas, outdoor seating, et cetera, that create social opportunities and connect people with onsite or adjacent open space areas for residents of the project, and support the green necklace." You know, if that is language that resonates, and seems like that's what we talked about, that then shows up in Pickering, and in Gilman, and in Eastlake and Confluence, because some of these have duplicative developer obligations in each neighborhood.
The 1.1, the only word that I thought that might be changed is, change "create" to "invite." Invite social opportunities?
I'm going to do this.
I don't know.
In words, so that, like, I can actually get it, hopefully, captured, because I have a very short amount of time to turn this around. So I'm sorry, Stacy, which one?
First line.
Yeah.
Instead of "create social opportunities," invite.
Okay. I think that's, okay.
A little overreaching to say, "We are going to create social opportunities."
Yeah.
And then, that's, oh, I think you've got three different elements to hear. So, "Create or invite social opportunities, comma, connect people with onsite or adjacent open space areas for residents of the project, comma, and support the green necklace." Yeah, that's what I think. Three separate ones there.
Okay.
I think last time, we talked about using the, for example, which is the, e.g., parks, trails, plazas, outdoor seedings, which I think is good. I think then you can get rid of et cetera, because those are examples, and we don't need to say.
Et cetera.
Okay.
Love a wordsmither.
1.2, "Enhance the variety of housing." Enhance, thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Enhance the variety of housing choices, size tenure, special needs, and price provided in the neighborhood.
Issues or questions? Okay.
Okay. 2.1, "Provide mountains-to-sound trail and Cougar Mountain Trailhead with pedestrian and bicycle connections and wayfinding signage as supported by the city's wayfinding plan." Now, we talked about this one, and I think this is a, I think this is a chicken-and-egg one. I think that we have to actually have a wayfinding plan that requires either improvements or in lieu of. I don't know that we can suggest the in lieu of fees without having the plan be done. So I think, so my response to that is that the wayfinding plan, when we get it done, it will talk about either providing improvements or paying in lieu of fees, which will then build up that reserve for us to fund the wayfinding plan. And as long as we reference the wayfinding plan here, I think the vision will be consistent with kind of what our conversation was last time.
Should it be capital W, capital P?
Probably.
And when will we be seeing a draft of the wayfinding plan?
Yeah, that's a great question. So you guys budgeted money for us to do branding and a wayfinding plan last year, and we didn't get to it. And this year, our communications lead has been out. And so I think that, and LTAC has said they would be more than happy to help fund a wayfinding plan. So it's a matter of resources. I would hope maybe next year, because I'm trying to not add anything this year.
So I think wayfinding, I think there should be, first of all, I think it should be not capitalized, because we don't have a plan.
You don't have one yet?
And we don't have a definition of wayfinding plan. Those would be the two circumstances where it would be capitalized. And then I think it should be the city's adopted wayfinding plan, so it's only an adopted one that applies. Then I think the ampersand should, between pedestrian and bicycle, should be spelled out and.
Okay, hang on. What should be spelled out?
I think between cities and wayfinding, it should say "adopted."
Yes.
If we don't have one "adopted," then it's not going to apply. And then, ampersand between pedestrian and bicycle.
Oh, you want it spelled out?
Yeah, these are myths, but, anyway.
Okay.
That's my counter.
I'm not emotionally invested in whether it's capital S or not, so I defer to your clear, more experience in this subject matter.
Anything else on that one?
So 3.1, "Provide non-motorized mobility improvements that facilitate connections to Lake Sammamish State Park and the Regional Growth Center."
Sorry, I have a question on the other one.
Oh, sorry.
So with this wording, am I, I would think that if, in the meantime, if they are making connections, they will, does this allow for them to have to put in signage until that time when we have a wayfinding plan?
They won't do any.
Okay, so we're just, we're accepting that we will not get wayfinding signage until we have the.
So the good news is, if we can do it in two years, the number of projects we'll miss will probably be three or four. It won't be that many. Okay, so 3.1, I don't know that this one changed much, if at all.
We just, I just think we should be a little formal, and mine's not substantive, but Lake Sam, I mean, I think it should be Sammamish, but that's not substantive.
I have, I'm back on 2.1. So I think that, because I just think that we should make it clear that it's just the signage that is going to need the adopted way, because we want the connections to provide, we want the connections to the trailhead.
Right.
And so I think maybe that should be just made into two sentences. So, "Provide mountains-to-sound trail and Cougar Mountain Trailhead with pedestrian and bicycle connections," and period, and then "Provide wayfinding signage as supported by the city's adopted wayfinding plan."
Yep.
For the mountains-to-sound trail and Cougar Mountain Trailhead. Just to make it clear that it's, the first part of that sentence is not dependent on the wayfinding plan.
Okay.
Okay, 3.1, did you have any on that? 3.2?
So for non-single-family development, "Provide weather protection and seating for primary pedestrian walkways through block passages, year-round outdoor seating opportunities, and weather protection for transit stops."
So would the weather protection be only on through-block passages?
So.
What if, what if it was not a through-block passage? What if it was just a?
So Commissioner Morgan had a suggestion on this one. We can go to it right now, if you would like. So that was his comment, was not limiting it to through-block passages, but putting, including through-block passages. And I'm not sure, I guess, and maybe he'll talk a little bit earlier, why he struck and seating. Oh, because it's covered down here. Okay.
Because it's, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you guys like this language, this could substitute in each neighborhood for what we have currently.
I'm confused by, the revised language would say, "Year-round outdoor seating opportunities and transit stops." I'm not sure that's the language.
Provide weather protection for primary pedestrian walkways, including year-round, would it be a comma after this?
Yep.
Which I can't do, because I clipped it in. So, opportunities, Mel.
So they're providing the transit stops?
Yeah. So weather protection for the transit stops. So if you start at the beginning of the sentence and go, "Provide weather protection for primary pedestrian walkways, including through-block passages, year-round outdoor seating opportunities, and transit stops," I think that's what we're after.
I'm sorry, I thought the year-round outdoor seating opportunities were things that were provided. No? You're not providing weather prote, are you saying to just provide, then, weather protection for year-round outdoor seating opportunities, or provide year-round seating opportunities?
No, we wanted to provide year-round seating opportunities.
Okay, then the, then the "and transit stops" doesn't make sense.
Yes.
All right.
Weather protection, so I would unstrike that end. Mel, did you want to talk about this?
Well.
So come on up, come on up.
If you don't mind.
I have no structure, so feel free to jump.
Well, no, the thought here was, I think, previously, it'd been written, so you had to provide year-round seating opportunities, which meant any property had to have year-round seating opportunities as a requirement. And I don't know that every property should have year-round seating opportunities. So the focus here was more just to make sure any year-round seating opportunities, transit stops, and walkways would have weather protection.
So would it be more appropriate to say something like, "For primary pedestrian walkways and transit stops, comma, provide weather protection," or, there's something, this sentence needs to be restructured somehow.
I think it does make sense, because it says, "Provide weather protection for primary pedestrian walkways, year-round outdoor seating opportunities, and transit stops." It doesn't apply, it applies only if you are providing outdoor seating opportunities. If you're providing those, then you also have to provide weather protection.
But that was my question before, as to whether we were saying they needed to provide year-round outdoor seating opportunities, and Keith answered in the affirmative.
Yes.
But I think Commissioner Morgan is saying that wasn't the intention, so I think Keith misspoke unintentionally.
Again, it, yeah, the idea is that, I don't think that we should tell every property they have to provide a year-round seating opportunity, which, the way it was stated, they would have to do that as a checklist item, as a requirement.
So let me back up. Under what situations should this sentence apply? What are the scenarios in which?
So we need primary pedestrian walkways.
Yes.
Which they should have.
Right.
If you have a year-round seating opportunity.
Okay.
And any transit stops.
So the way, so the way that it used to read, I'm going to go back to the way it used to read, don't go anywhere. So, "Provide weather protection and seating for primary pedestrian walkways through-block passages." I like the "including through-block passages," because then we could potentially get others. So what we're saying is, on those major pedestrian ways, we want both weather protection and seating. And then it says, and then it says, "Year-round seating opportunities." So with some of the seating, I think your point was, so let's assume you have five benches along a mid-block crossing. You don't have to necessarily put a canopy over all five benches, but it'd be nice if at least one of the benches had a canopy over it, right? So that there'd be at least some opportunity for year-round outdoor seating. I thought that's kind of where we were headed.
Maybe, yeah. I guess I was thinking that any outdoor, any year-round seating would have weather protection.
It would, but.
If it's not considered year-round, it wouldn't have to.
Right, but it seems like we want to have at least some opportunity for year-round outdoor seating with every project, wouldn't you say?
He just said no.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I think there'd be some properties that might not, might not be a great opportunity, but.
Really?
I agree with Commissioner Morgan. I like the way that he's proposed this, but one of three.
My concern is that if we are saying that developers need to provide year-round outdoor seating opportunities, I want to make sure that that's unambiguous in the sentence.
That's not what it says.
In which case, it could be just a separate sentence, too. This could just be about weather protection, we have to provide it, and a separate requirement about, you know, about seating opportunities.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you said by, that's not what this says. Are, is it your, is it your understanding, is it your intention this evening, that when we are done with this, that we are suggesting that in certain circumstances, developers provide year-round outdoor seating opportunities?
So to me, that's a separate question. The topic here is weather protection. If, if there is year-round outdoor seating, then I agree with the proposal that it should have weather protection. The separate question that we can ask ourselves is, should we require every project to provide year-round outdoor seating? That's a separate obligation.
I am all for having two sentences that each tackle a topic, rather than having one sentence that might attempt to mush them together.
Sure, but it wouldn't be parallel construction, then. This is only about weather protection.
Okay. So, all right, I, okay, do we say it someplace else? I mean, several people have said they want developers to provide year-round outdoor seating opportunities. So where do we say that, and how do we say that, if we don't say it someplace else?
So we do have in 1.1, "Provide amenities, parks, trails, plazas, outdoor seating." But currently, it's examples of things.
Right.
That create social opportunities. So I think potentially, because that's about providing amenities, including outdoor seating, we could strengthen that if we want to, and then keep, and then separate out the weather protection, so that weather protection one is just weather protection.
I agree with making weather protection separate, and then I think we can talk about to what degree we require outdoor seating. We could strengthen 1.1 by adding year-round outdoor seating in front of outdoor. Then it doesn't require every project to have it, but.
If it has it, it should have rain protection. Yep, I'm good for that.
Well, 1.1 would say, you should provide amenities that could invite social activities, for example, out, year-round outdoor seating. And then if they do provide it, then they have to provide.
Right. Good for that.
That may disincentivize a developer to provide year-round outdoor seating, because they also don't want to pay for the.
But in this state, it's not really year-round outdoor seating if it doesn't have rain protection, because it rains so much. Except this year, bizarrely enough.
So.
I know.
Okay.
Y'all think of those two changes in 1.1 and 3.2.
So I'm thinking with 1.1, if there was a good place for outdoor seating, would you, this would allow you then to have a conversation with the developer if they weren't planning to have seating, you would say you could talk with them about 1.1?
Yeah.
Can I ask, there is no non-residential development in West Newport? I don't think that's true.
There's, so what this is saying is that this. There's, so what this is saying is that this, this obligation for weather protection and these through-block passages and outdoor seating really doesn't apply to single-family?
No, I'm sorry, I've moved on. I've moved on to the fact that Pickering has that thing in Baby Poop Green, and West Newport doesn't.
Yes.
And so I was asking, I was assuming that West Newport doesn't, under the argument that there isn't any non-residential square footage to maintain. And I'm asking if, in fact, that's the case, because I think West Newport has some non-residential square footage, right?
So this says "non-single-family," right? Or am I confused?
No, I'm looking at 1.2 under Pickering, that's in Baby Poop Green.
Why'd you go down to Pickering?
Because it's not in West Newport.
I'm sorry, now I'm with you.
Good.
So not with you until now.
Oh, I couldn't see.
Oh, my gosh.
That's why I'm patiently...
Okay, so... So the reason the yellow band shows up in Pickering, Gilman, and Eastlake is because there's existing jobs there now that could be removed as part of redevelopment. For West Newport, the properties that are left are, one's a single-family house and the other's vacant. So the two parcels kind of towards the end of West Newport, the vet house is a house, but it's not being used as a vet clinic right now. It's actually, people are living there. And then the empty space, which was the potential storage, is, it's an empty parcel right now. So there is, so the idea that you're taking something out that has existing jobs and replacing it with something that doesn't have existing, that doesn't have the same number of jobs, was not relevant for West Newport.
Okay. Doesn't West Newport include that where West Newport hits 900? Aren't there businesses right around there?
So you've got three homes. One's being used as a daycare. One's being used as maybe a small office. I mean, it's like four, it's like four jobs. I mean, I don't know that it's worth getting kind of wound up over.
All right.
Yeah. Okay.
4.1?
4.1. So last time, we had educational opportunities, and the conversation was, "that sounds like signs." So right now it says, "provide viewing platforms, educational signage, and other measures to help promote the value of the natural environment."
I would take out the value of...
Okay.
You all, to that one?
Okay. 4.2, incorporate green building measures, which is what we used to have. And there was a suggestion to make a connection to the city's Sustainable Building Action Strategy. So right now it says, "incorporate green building measures." Consider approaches listed in the city's Sustainable Building Action Strategy. Rolls off the tongue.
Maybe consider, maybe replace "consider" with "such as..." Because otherwise, it's not grammatically correct anyway.
Okay. And then 4.3, conserve and restore natural areas and wildlife corridors. And that made it into all the neighborhoods.
You on that one?
Okay, so Pickering...
I'll just point out, some of these items have periods at the end and others don't.
I was just thinking the same thing, I was gonna...
So do you like periods or not?
I do.
You like periods, all right. I will, I will go back and add periods. That's easy.
As long as they're all complete sentences, and it's consistent.
Okay. So Pickering, we talked about 1.1 already. So 1.2 is highlighted. And I don't know if you want to talk about that now or talk about it later. The reason why I highlighted 1.2 is, last committee meeting, there was, I think, one council member that was supportive of including this provision, one council member that was not supportive, and one that was maybe leaning towards not supporting. And so I think we should talk about it one more time. And if it's, a majority of the committee wants it out, I will take it out and reflect that in the update. Or if it's a majority leaving it in, I'll leave it in and reflect that it may not be a unanimous position. So, this one.
Can I? I'm bursting to the seams. So, nine years ago, I ran on workforce housing, living wage jobs. So I want to keep jobs in town. This is an experiment, right? If we do this, and we come back in three or four years, and nobody has built anything, because this is onerous, then we will do something different. But I believe in preserving jobs.
So I was leaning "no" last time, and I appreciate that perspective. I think, for me, it is, it would be, in some cases, just difficult to, so if you're replacing jobs, difficult to, I guess, the square footage or job opportunities. So it just might be difficult, from the developer's point of view, to know how to go about doing this. And also, I was thinking that if you're replacing one business that has a few employees, and then you have a very large apartment, you potentially have many jobs that are supported by those people, or economic interests that are supported by those people, but not directly, not with like a direct square footage measure. And so my, I think it's a complex system, and it could be difficult, from the perspective of the developers, to actually meet the intent of not losing jobs with this.
I think I was one who was the supportive one, and I'm leaning the other way, only because I... With development and redevelopment, you, jobs and creating jobs and creating housing, you're gonna be, one's gonna be ahead of the others. You're not gonna be out creating it all at the same time. And I don't know that I'm, I'm concerned about losing opportunities. And I'm also concerned about how this is implemented. And I also want to preserve jobs and create jobs, because that's what we need here. But I really am unconvinced that this is the mechanism to do that.
So you guys have talked about a lot of different things. And, you know, one of the biggest, I think, angst points over, and over Atlas, was that Atlas took out, you know, 40,000 square feet of retail, and didn't put a single... I don't disagree with you, there are jobs in apartment complexes, but it's not very many. You know, and the people that take care of the grounds would be the people that took care of the grounds of the retail space. So that might be a little bit of a wash. But, you know, there's a lot of things you guys have talked about, and I'm, so I'm kind of weaving some things together. In a way, I also share Councilmember Marx's perspective, that if we dialed this in wrong, you know, it's gonna be two or three years, we might hit one recession, and then fix it before, you know, the economy comes back. It's, you know, the biggest thing I heard about storage units, so I'm gonna take us there for a second, was that it's a dead land use. And I think one of the things that this does is, you know, if you were wanting to take out a strip retail center and put a storage building in its place, this would not let you do that, because there's not going to be job equivalency. And so you'd have to, it would have to be a mixed-use storage building, you know, with something other than storage on the ground floor with the storage units above. You could still put the storage in, but it would be a different kind of a building. So if jobs is an important piece of the puzzle, you know, I think the question that I don't have an answer to, which is probably the first question I ever heard you ask, Councilmember Goodman, is, you know, "what if the whole valley just turned to apartments?" We have nothing in code that would stop that. This stops that.
Great.
So I don't know if this, I don't know if this is the right dial or lever for us. I don't know that it worries me that much. You know, the, if, so the apartment builders that I've talked to, they would just build the space and hope to get somebody to lease it.
Okay, so...
But I'm not trying to persuade you.
No, I'm just, we have enough commentary on that. I think, for me, I'm hoping that we have some comment from the public here. And when we're done, before we decide, I'm gonna leave that a start item for me, I haven't decided yet.
Okay.
I'm just gonna clarify my comment. So there, for the apartment building, I mean, yes, there will be a few jobs, the manager and the groundskeepers and... But what I meant more was that I think it's a complicated system, in that if you have a bunch of people that are now moving to an area where there was maybe one store, and we're replacing it with a lot of individuals, they may be able to support more businesses and more jobs nearby by walking to the restaurant nearby that employs more people than what was replaced with that previous building. I just think that it's a complicated system, and I think this may not be the way to retain jobs. And if I were a developer, I'm not sure, especially, residential square footage is much more clear, I think, than job opportunities. How to retain those job opportunities is less clear to me. So that was more of my comment.
Okay.
1.3?
1.3, we've done.
1.4?
1.4, "provide convenient access to Lake Spamish State Park." 1.5, okay. So I use the same logic as our, as our housing one. So 1.5 says, "enhance the provision of amenities for people of all ages found within the neighborhood." So part of the conversation at PPC for Pickering and Gilman, because they were the regional growth center, and they were expected to be the most urban of our neighborhoods, I think there was more of a desire for the amenities to appeal to folks of all ages. And so you're gonna see this in, I think, Pickering and Gilman, but not in the other neighborhoods.
I think that the order of the clauses should be reversed. So, "enhance the provision of amenities within the neighborhood for people of all ages." Because you want, you want amenities, you want to enhance the variety of amenities for people with, of all ages, not for all ages found within the neighborhood.
Clearly, English was not my strength.
Now, wait, wait, you put "found," you're moving "found" to the end. You don't want to move "found" to the end.
Where were you?
I even added a period.
Where were you when we were looking at the Central Esq. plant? Your buddy?
All right, so we've, we've already monkeyed with weather protection, that's 1.6. 2.1, "provide appropriate outdoor lighting to promote evening public activity."
So I thought maybe, strike "appropriate," and strike "public activity," and instead say, "provide outdoor lighting to provoke evening, promote evening activity, both onsite and for the public." And I'm not sure that's perfect, but it kind of seems like that's what you were thinking at.
I think we'll get to that when we look at Atlas, because they did not, really. Okay?
What were you thinking, both onsite and for the public?
Onsite and, kind of, yes. On the, on the perimeter, you know, creating an actual lively streetscape is something we're trying to do, right? So if you don't do anything on your edges, like Atlas did, it's, it's not inviting, it's not, you're not wanting people to walk that corridor in the evening.
So was your intent, then, to promote evening activity, or provide the lighting where the building interfaces with the public areas, or something? So what's the list of things you're trying to accomplish with this sentence? And then we can pull them together.
What if it said, "at the edges"? Does that work?
Just of what?
Of the project. So, all right. Onsite and...
In transit? Passing in...
For the neighborhood?
Onsite and...
Passing through? I don't know.
Is it in the periphery of the project? I mean, I think, I thought that saying, "both for the people that live there and also for the public"
Yes.
"does capture it."
Okay.
So maybe, maybe that way, which was close to what it was before, but...
Onsite's one word.
It's one word? Okay. And then 3.1, "provide public access to a location for a landing and access to public right-of-way for new, for a new, non-motorized crossing of I-90 across from West Newport neighborhood." So this was, we're just trying to get the easement or the dedication for the public to get to wherever that bridge lands. You okay with 3.1?
I think, as I read it, it's very specific.
Okay.
3.2?
3.2, "when the new," apparently I forgot every other word. "When the new Pickering-to-Gilman connection is identified, provide for transit, pedestrian, and bicycle circulation connections to facilitate neighborhood mobility." So because we don't know where that crossing is gonna be, it's hard to kind of say, all we want to do is, once we know where that crossing is, we want people to funnel bikes and pads to that location. Okay, we talked about 4.1. We talked about 4.2, and we talked about 4.3.
And then under Gilman, we talked about 1.1, talked about 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, 1.5, 1.6, 3.1, sorry, 2.1, 3.1. We're done with that one.
Yep.
Eastlake.
Two, three, four, 2.1.
3.2.
3.2, "provide wayfinding for local and regional trails."
We already did that one.
Yep.
Green building, okay.
Confluence. We're gonna hit the Gilman one, Gilman Village.
Yes. 1.2.
Neighborhood serving, small-scale employment opportunities are encouraged. Ooh, encouraged. How'd that one survive last time? We were tired. So part of confluence being a little different is, it's smaller scale, it's more, I think, a mix of uses.
This isn't enforceable at all.
It's not.
I don't know, I mean...
Okay.
It's a conversation, but this belongs in the vision piece, not opinion.
Okay. I took it out.
I mean, that's just me.
Yeah, no, I don't, it shouldn't have survived last time. Enhance the variety, we did that. Wayfinding, we did that. Public access, okay. So this one used to say, this one had some spine word in it. So, "provide public access to his..." So provide public access to Issaquah Creek to support the green necklace.
Why do we need to support the green necklace? Or as part of the green necklace?
As part of the green necklace? I think that works.
I apologize for being distracted. I have an urgent family problem going on that doesn't require me to leave, but.
Attention.
Yes.
Sure.
Sorry about that.
Are you guys okay with that one? An extra space.
Oh, my gosh. Yes, there is. I was reading 2.2. So this is.
It wasn't there last time.
No, it wasn't. So this one, woo, so this one was the language from Issaquah Highlands. So you remember, we talked about porches and fronts and.
Oh, yeah.
The suggestion was maybe look for a reference from Issaquah Highlands Design Guidelines. So like older neighborhoods, buildings should reflect a variety of traditional design interpretations, pleasing street presence, gracious entries, and inconspicuous garages. That's what I was going after.
So first of all, it's not, well, knowing it's not enforceable, really, not necessarily opposed to it, but I would strike like older neighborhoods. I don't know why that's in there. I think it's in there because Issaquah Highlands at the time was a new neighborhood.
Yeah.
But I don't.
Okay.
It just seems like it should be part of design code, not this.
You want this out? Everybody's got kind of smirky looks on their faces.
I wasn't smirking. I just, I have no idea what a gracious entry is. I know what an inconspicuous garage is, but I'm not sure I've ever seen a gracious entry.
Gracious is large and inviting. All right, I'm going to say, if we're having problems, let's just, we'll dump it. We can always add it back in later if we feel like we missed an opportunity.
I think, didn't we talk last time about how the design does does allow for a bunch of different building types in this neighborhood?
It does.
And so it kind of gets at that probably in a more direct way.
I'm gonna I'm gonna put my eggs in that basket and hope that the architectural manual gives us the tools we need to get there and the urban design part of it.
It really was about having porches.
Yeah, making it more neighborhood feeling.
Inviting social interaction.
Yes.
But that didn't do it.
Okay.
And I think we have the first, the 1.1, which is the one about providing social opportunities and plazas and those sorts of things. That is enforceable.
Yeah.
Okay.
1.3.
So let's let's take a break on 2.3 for a second, because I've got some other choices for you guys to look at. So the only other one we haven't talked about is 3.1. So let's do 3.1. So provide property connections to facilitate transit connections, okay, to Newport and Gilman, where the street grid is incomplete. All right, so this one was reworked a little bit, and I still am not loving it a whole lot. What we were talking about was because because we have the creek running through confluence, it creates a barrier and the street grid is intermittent in places. And so getting people to transit is should be a priority. And if there's a trail or a pedestrian connection through a property to help facilitate people getting to transit, that's what we were trying to do with this one.
Can I ask a little more in depth? How does this work in practice? Like, I've got a property and you say, boy, this would be really great to have a pedestrian walkway through.
Yeah.
And I say, get bent, I don't want to do that.
So if we don't have something that tells us that we can make you give us one, then I get bent and walk away. If though, and let's use, and actually, Atlas, I think, is a good example here. There actually is a walkway that connects through, basically, it goes through the parking lot of KFC and the auto parts store, which isn't great, but you still, if you wanted to get to Gilman to catch a bus, you don't have to walk around the whole project to get out to Gilman to catch a bus. And so so that's the thing, is getting those connections through property that are can make it convenient for people on bikes and and on foot. That's what we're trying to do. So if if this is clear, I can then tell a developer, look, the bus, the transit stop is here, here's the closest the public can get to it without going all the way around your property. I want to get something through your property. How do we do that? And so if there's something here that's clear enough, I can make them do that.
And this is language you think is clear enough in that situation?
Is it, are you, go ahead.
I think what wouldn't, what isn't clear to me is that.
Public.
It's referring to to non-motorized connections. So I think that would.
Let me try that right here, Vicki, for a second.
Provide missing non-motorized trail links to transit connections on Newport and Gilman. Is it meant to?
How's that work? So provide non-motorized connections to facilitate public transit connections.
What about, you've got two connections.
I know.
Or if you change the first connections to links. They meant to be trails, like sidewalks, walkways?
That works for me.
All right, sidewalks to facilitate public transit connections. This is more.
Well, but it could be.
Might not be a sidewalk.
Could be an asphalt connection.
Or a soft trail.
I I think maybe, do we need to say where street grid is incomplete? I think maybe just strike that.
Okay.
We want to.
Because otherwise, you have to get into, is the street grid complete or not?
Or will it ever be complete?
So provide missing, I have missing, missing, comma, non-motorized trail links. Facilitate public transit connections. Connections to Newport or on Newport and Gilman? I don't know, what was your? On Newport and Gilman?
Do on.
Or I was thinking public transit from Newport and Gilman, because you mentioned the bus. And then you could, I don't know if we like links better than connections. I I'm fine with either, but if we wanted to just say to facilitate public transit from Newport and Gilman, and then you could use connections on the first one.
Okay, that's fine. And then I think we need Is connections okay, or do we need trail in front of that? I don't know specifically what we're talking about.
I think non-motorized connections is good. I mean, that's that's, for me, that's concrete or asphalt.
Okay.
Okay, so Gilman Village, so after a long conversation about Gilman Village last time, I'm not sure I understood what the committee was asking me to do. So so here we are. I did a change to 2.3, and Vicki and I had a conversation about this. Through redevelopment, retain Gilman Village's property connection to Issaquah's historic past. I think that gets us a plaque. I'm not sure, you know, once Gilman Village once stood here. I don't know that that's doing it for me. So the question for you guys, I provided a couple other alternatives. They keep getting more invasive as we go down. And so the question for you guys is, is, one, how important is Gilman Village? And two, you know, how far do we want to go to try and have the property owner or a subsequent developer retain some piece or imagery of what's there today?
So let me offer a fresh view on this. These structures are historically significant or not, right?
So here's the picture of them down here on the truck. So it all began in 1972.
We have a definition for historically significant, right?
So right now, what I've come to learn is mid-century is now historic. So if anything in the 50s is now can classify as historic.
Because they're so old.
I know. It's it makes it makes me feel very old. And so these structures could be landmarked. They have historic significance in our community. Now typically, you want to do that with the property owner's concurrence, and so there we are.
I don't really know it. I don't really know what to make of this. It makes me a little uncomfortable. I understand the significance of, you know, Gilman Village. You know, it's an identity, a very strong identity. And I don't. I don't know if we can obligate the owners to have discussions. I suppose we, I mean, I suppose we could.
Yeah. So I think I think 2.3.1 and 2.3.2 are both doable. I mean, what we get with 2.3.1 is at least an opportunity for the city to have a conversation with somebody before they completely blade the entire property and put something else up.
Have we talked to the owners about this?
Oh, have we talked to the owners? No.
That seems a little.
Intense.
Yeah, I mean, I would think it would be a little, if I owned a property and the city was talking about my property and putting some sort of obligation on my property, that city would have talked to me about it.
I think we should either have a policy where we engage people that own historic properties or we don't. And whether it's in Gilman Village or anyplace else, you know, we either preserve historically significant structures or we don't. And I don't see why the Gilman Village would be special in that regard. There's a bunch of things that we should be trying to not have torn down because they're historically significant.
So that's the end of our list?
Yeah.
That list?
Yeah.
Is there, are there other things that you wanted to talk with?
Not, no. So what I heard from y'all, I think, although Councilmember Hunt is still pondering, is maybe take 2.3 out, at least for now.
Well, I think we, when we're done discussing all the materials for tonight, then we'll do public comment.
Okay.
And then I think there are a couple, three things that we need to.
Okay. Then.
Deliver down.
I'm I'm done.
Do you want to, so you.
Oh, do you want to go through the Atlas?
So I don't want to, I don't want to commit to going through it. I think you can briefly tell us the exercise that you went through and very briefly conclude what you found.
Yes. So what I did.
And if we have questions, we'll ask you.
So one of the suggestions that you made was, which I thought was good, was that, you know, maybe do a test run. Let's see what this looks like on a project. And unfortunately, we don't have very many projects in Central, so the choices are fairly limited. So I picked, I picked the easy one, the one that's done. I could have picked Vale, I could have picked Gateway, but I picked Atlas. And so I ran Atlas against these 1 through 1 through 4.3 of Gilman to see how it fared. Because part of the thing is, is how would the project change? And is it a reasonable change, or is this a dramatic change? And so besides 1.2, and we talked about the non-residential square footage and how that would play out, you know, most of the things that you find at Atlas are, it's very much, it turned its back on the community. So it's got these interior courtyards, even the courtyard that's on 7th has kind of a plexiglass fence around it, and it's got, you know, festival lighting on it, but the vegetation's all kind of growing up and kind of secluding it off from the streetscape. Along Locust, there's places where there's like an indent for the building, and they put like two bike racks and two garbage cans, but there's like no bench, and there's no weather protection, and there's no lighting. So when you look at it, it's like, okay, well, here's a space, but they're not expecting anybody really to stop there or to hang out there. And so kind of what we did with a number of these things is we said, we actually want people to hang out, you know, and and for property owners, some property owners, that's threatening, because then there's people loitering around, causing mischief. But if you have a vibrant community, you actually have people hanging out on your streetscape, you know, and maybe talking to you as you walk by or whatnot. That's not happening at Atlas. And that's the biggest thing that I found, is the edges, the outside perimeter of the project is really not what we envision in Central.
I went through it, and I appreciate the the exercise that you went to, went through, and it it helped me, it helped me be able to support these obligations, because I think although they're not, it's, again, it creates that conversation. And I think so many of the things that we did not end up getting were because we didn't have anything that would even require a conversation.
Right.
Yeah. And then you had this, too?
I was just a site plan to help you guys kind of look at the photos.
Okay.
Okay.
Ready for public comment? Okay. We have public, members of the public who would like to speak to us tonight about visions.
All right, so I guess one of the largest heartburns that I have, which is not up here right now, is the repeated thing on creating a social spot. But you say, basically, only for the people who live and work there? I can't remember what the exact phrasing is.
It's like 1.3. Okay.
1.3, okay. Residents are employees of the project and support the green necklace. Well, the SIDS requires that you create a public-public space, a private-public space. They have to make a place where anyone can go. And that's one of the things that is not being well done. And so, well, this gets to, we want to give the people who are moving in a place to go. It does not create the discussion about the public space. Now, interestingly, you sort of got there obliquely by changing the language about lighting, and you basically are saying you want to attach their private space and have the lighting overflow into the public space. I don't think that's enough. I think you need to require the private-public space to be at a place where the public could find it, would be probably the most important thing. Because in Atlas, they did, they can't. It's the park that basically you have to wind your way pretty much all the way through Atlas, even though there's a public park there, so it acts like a private park, even though it is a public place. So I don't think that one works. I agree with Tola. We need to have a policy on historic properties in the central Issaquah area, and how far do we want to go to preserve that history? I think that that's very appropriate, because it's awkward to, like Bullet Point Gilman Village. The interesting transit ped connection, well, in our urban design guidelines, we have this thing called mid-block crossing that is required. And so now this puts another connection with a reason through it. And I sort of like having a reason, because I had a heck of a time at Development Commission trying to get them to put in a mid-block crossing that would allow people. trying to get them to put in a mid-block crossing that would allow people to get to Gilman more easily because... So they didn't do it. And so even though it's required in the urban design guidelines, staff decided you didn't need it. And adding this language might create enough of a discussion to get that in to begin with so then I don't have to have heart failure every time. Outdoor lighting there was... You know, the memory sort of goes. Oh, job opportunities. So if you take Issaquah Highlands as an example, where you said, you know what, we're just going to let time take care of it and the market will take care of it. And so in the end, we ended up with this sort of awkward extra land. I think you just have to have some language, whether this is the right language or not, requiring a balance between jobs and residential. Because otherwise, you're going to get more of a bedroom community, but stack and pack at this point in time. And that's going to suck up all your land. So I think you do need to be cautious. Not saying I love this language, but I do like the concept. And I think one last thing, when you go to the Atlas example, they filled in a creek in front of Atlas because everything was supposed to be up to the street. This will make it so that cannot happen. And the urban design guidelines made it so that that should not happen. And I want you to be aware that that is what is going on here. So your big ditches and your streams, and I love it, should be here to stay and we should be threading them through our town as an amenity as compared to something to hide. I just want you to, from my review of Atlas, Keith didn't go over that. Okay? So, but I think it's better. I still have concerns about implementing it and getting staff to do it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much. I've got a couple of things and I think they might be there. The lighting language, let's see, 2.1, Pickering, provide outdoor lighting to promote evening activity both onsite and for the public. My only concern is, is this appropriate for every property in every location throughout Pickering? If you have an office building that closes at 5:00 or 6:00, do we want to have outdoor lighting that promotes public activity at that property or even onsite? So I guess my suggestion there, if it works, is to add the phrase "where appropriate." And if that might give staff enough flexibility to say, yes, we believe it's appropriate here, put it there. In other places, maybe not. And then on, I did like the change you made to 2.1 in Confluence about provide public access to Issaquah Creek as part of the Green Necklace. My concern is, it sounds like every property that abuts Issaquah Creek has to provide public access to the creek. And I don't know if we intend to have every parcel providing a public access. Since you said as part of the Green Necklace, I don't know if that would mean there has to be a Green Necklace running through that property or not to make it. Otherwise, I'm not sure that we'd want every property to have to provide access to the creek. And then the... Oh, and on 3.1 on Confluence, it's not up there, but the, I guess I wondered about adding the phrase. I didn't get all the writing down on what it was.
You can scroll down.
Okay, thank you.
Keep going. There you go.
I was thinking where it says to facilitate public transit from Newport and Gilman, I would guess I was thinking to facilitate public access to transit on Newport and Gilman. Does that make... I don't know if that makes sense or not. Because we're not talking about moving the public trans, moving the public access to. And then finally, the question about no loss of jobs or square footage. So number one, I guess the question for me would be, number one, why do we want to keep jobs downtown? And I think it's providing employment opportunities where people live. And then why do we want to do that? That helps us with traffic. People don't have to leave the area to go to work. And if it's all apartments, everybody's leaving town. And worse, everybody's coming back in the PM peak. So is this the best way to reduce traffic? And I don't think it is largely because it burdens specific properties with the traffic problem we have and saying specific properties are going to be the ones that have to solve it. And maybe a better way is to limit residential development until we get more jobs or make traffic improvements. And I know that gets back towards the idea of sort of a moratorium or something, but if we're concerned we're getting too many apartments and too much, and there are traffic problems, maybe we say, look, we have traffic problems. We need to fix those and until we do those, we're not going to add more people to the area. So just thoughts on that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, this is good on 3.1 about connections, but it might not be the transit. This might be able to walk to work or get, or just whatever, just to kind of have that grid at least for people on bikes and especially on pedestrians to make it more efficient for people to get around and not is dependent upon having a car. The Atlas thing, I've never been at Safeway and gone into the park at Atlas. I've always come Confluence, go over the bridge, come down past Bernson Park, then the next one, and then kind of sneak in behind the Montessori School and through the park there. And it has a pretty good feel to it. I feel it's more of a public than I do at the ponds at Pickering. And when I feel, when I'm at the ponds at Pickering or that area or some of those, I feel like I'm trespassing. And it just, you know, I don't know how we address that. But there's a different feeling you can get about these public spaces as whether they're welcome there, they feel good, or it's, you feel like you're trespassing. And it's going to be a hard thing for... It's not necessarily a wordsmithing thing. It's going to be a gut and feel of the people who are processing these plots or development And let's be realistic. We call it Pickering, we might as well call it Costco. I mean, that's going to drive what happens there. We're talking the international headquarters of a major corporation and that area is going to be driven a lot by what businesses there are going to be catering to what Costco needs. You've got to think that. But we also want to make it, it's also the key to the state park access and a lot of other good things. But then there's some neat stuff over there, the creek, the wetlands on the east side of the creek. There's going to be a lot of good stuff there that we want to be able to take advantage of. But good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something you forgot? Very, 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 very long. Sure. You earned an extra 30 seconds. Thank you.
And this comes from Atlas, talking to someone whose daughter is moving because of all the off-gassing of all of the paints and materials and carpeting from the Atlas project. It's supposed to be really bad. So I don't think that this green building language answers the mail.
Thank you. Okay, so we have some outstanding questions.
Okay.
Just because it's first on my list here with public comments, the one I would raise first is the sort of the Gilman Village one. And whether we want to leave it in or take it out, I would take it out. Not that I don't agree that we have, that it has significance for Issaquah. I just don't think this is the appropriate way to try to preserve it.
I don't disagree with that. I do think that Gilman Village is important and unique and has historic value. And so my reason for thinking that maybe it should be kept in is that some of these maybe are, they're sort of stopgap measures and they're trying to correct for things that we've realized. For example, this has been highlighted a bunch of times with Atlas, we've realized that maybe we want to clarify the intent of some of our vision. And so we want to specifically say things that we want the developers to do to make that vision possible. And so I think, I completely agree that this is a bigger, there's a bigger story here about preservation of historic and landmark buildings and structures. But I wonder if, for right now, this is a way to at least have a conversation in the event that we don't have another measure to address this.
So maybe a possible outcome would be to move this into the city's expectations in terms of whether we want to specifically target Gilman Village and have the city approach the property owner to start a conversation about that. Or whether we want, as a city action, to work on a policy for historic preservation of significant properties within Central Issaquah. So we could do either. I don't know what, if you guys think either of those are a good outcome as opposed to a developer obligation, you know, put the monkey on the city's back and have us do the next, take the next step, whatever that might be.
So I'm concerned about what's on our plate for 2018 at the moment. And I certainly think that for a while, we've needed a review of historic properties. And I think that Confluence might look a little different if we had more teeth to some of our historic preservation efforts. But I don't presuppose that that's going to occur this year because it feels like, in fact, you're shaking your head, no, that it's unlikely to occur this year even were. So what does that mean for this? I mean, I don't know what this... My inclination is to take this out. I don't know how you're going to take this committee's report back and what the final bill is going to look like when it comes to full council, but I imagine there's going to be a number of issues to talk about. And, you know, the committee will have a recommendation and then the council will, you know, the other four people will chime in. But I would take this out because it doesn't seem enforceable and...
I don't disagree with anything that Vicki said or Horace said. I think I put myself in the position of that property owner and all of a sudden we've got something in code. I would like to have conversation and work initially with them rather than, look what we just adopted. I mean, it just doesn't feel like that's how we should be operating.
Okay.
That's... It sounds like you have two to one.
Okay. So I think that of the options that you presented, the one that resonated most with me would be the one about having a discussion, right? And I think that potentially saying that we want to have a discussion, this is a discussion between the Gilman Village and the city. And so I think we could put that on the city. I think that's a good, I think that's a good way to approach it because I think, and I appreciate that there is a lot on the city's plate, but I think that this doesn't have a timeframe on it. It's part of the vision. And in fact, some of these are really long-term. So I think as part of our long-term vision that the city should have discussions on this preservation, I think that would be a good...
Are you talking about new language in here or what do you...
I'm talking about, so if we're talking just about developer obligations, I agree. I think we can strike it. But I think we also have a part of this vision document that's city actions, city implementing actions. And so we could put city implementing actions.
So we can do that. I think if it's, I mean, think about it in the same vein as the ped bike I-90 crossing. That's not going to happen next year. But there's a placeholder for us to work with WashDOT to try and get that to happen because it's important for those two neighborhoods. I think similarly, if we think this is important and let's put it on the city's action, that way we won't lose it. Hopefully, we won't lose it. And it just, it may take a year or two before we get to that. Okay?
All right. The next one I have on the list is about the jobs.
Jobs.
And what number is that here?
Well, it could be Eastlake 1.4 or Gilman 1.2.
Chair.
Yeah.
So we started this moratorium partially, or the single biggest thing was because all we were getting was housing. I believe that lots more housing is coming to King County. And I don't think we can shut the door, but I think that we can harness that development and help make sure, I mean, it is coming. This area continues to be, and I've said it before, the fastest-growing, I think this year, it's like the fastest-growing metro in the U.S., but it's certainly the fastest-growing metro that's not in a, you know, southern border state, right? It's not Dallas, Houston, Atlanta, or Phoenix, which are the big four. So it's coming and we can either help try to shape it or not. And I believe this would help do so.
I have questions about how this would be implemented. So if this was a, if there was a few stores, like a strip mall format, and then you have a large apartment building that came in, you, I guess, would you, if this were adopted, you would have to have vertical mixed use because you would have to put, and the only place where this would make sense is to put that non-residential square. So this is basically requiring vertical mixed use?
So not, it doesn't have to be. That's most likely the way it would turn out. But, you know, there's a different example, and Mel brought one up at PPC. I don't know if, remember if you were at PPC at the time, I think you were still. So Cascade Business Park, which is over just east of the CenturyLink site, single-story, very low-density, it's all office space. It's flex and office space. If you were, if this got included in Gilman, what would happen there is you would come and build, and you would probably build like a four-story office building and then an apartment building next to it. It wouldn't have to be vertical mixed use, but it would have to end up being mixed use at the end of the day. So if it's not vertical, it's horizontal mixed use. And what would happen most likely is, so I'm an apartment builder, and if that was an obligation on the property, what I would do is I would subdivide the property. I would say, okay, here's a parcel and I'm going to market that for an office building. I'm going to build my apartments. And as long as the density worked out, so it wasn't a crazy FAR, met our development standards, that would probably be an okay outcome. The advantage you would have is you could actually share the parking because residential and office actually can share some of the parking spaces. So there's some efficiencies of construction in that you don't have to duplicate all of the parking for both residential and office. That was a long answer, sorry.
I'm just, I'm imagining sort of unintended consequences of this one. I think, I mean, I think if you have some small amount of non-residential square footage that you're trying to replace, you could basically have a large, flat, lower-density building right next to your really big apartment building. And then, you know, potentially, there could have been a different use for that that we would not allow because they have to do something with that square footage. I just, I wonder if it has unintended consequences. And so that's confusion about the residential square footage piece. And then the job opportunities, I find even more confusing just because not all jobs are... So if you have a place that employs 20 people part-time, does that the same? Then we have five people full-time, does that equal out? Different jobs are different. Different jobs are different, right? And so it's difficult for me to imagine this. And I assume that we are not saying you have to keep the same exact business jobs, so...
No. So we're making this, you know, as implementable as possible. So typical, so what we would use is, so there's a table on the U.S. Green Building Council's website on square footage per employee, and it gives a bunch of different types of land uses and different, you know, square footage... you know, square footages per employee, and so what we would do is if it was, say, a neighborhood commercial center, that works out to be a certain number of employees, that's how I did the Atlas one, and then if the, if the developer said, "Okay, I don't want to build retail, I want to build commercial space," well, commercial has a much higher job generation rate per square foot than retail does, so then he could build a smaller office space than the retail that used to be there, that would be his choice, you know, and then the hard part is, we don't control occupancies, really, so if, if two years later he can't market that space to an office builder, maybe he's, maybe there's a coffee shop that wants to go in, at that point, we'll let the coffee shop go in. I mean, I, you know, at some point, the question is, is how draconian are we going to be with this obligation, and I think we're not trying to be overreaching, but I think as Council Member March stated, I mean, you know, once something builds as all residential, I mean, Atlas will have five jobs for the next 50 years, so.
I don't love it at all. Again, I think we're trying to legislate things that we should be looking at regarding zoning and land use, which I think is a discussion we've, land use in Central Issaquah is a discussion we have missed, we'd never even talked about it during the creation of the Central Issaquah Plan. I think that's the next discussion that we need to have, and I anticipate mentioning that on Monday. So, I'm wondering if, I mean, I, I could, I could try it, I could, could try this language, try some different language, something like preserve the amount of non-residential square footage, or enhance job opportunities during redevelopment. I think it's a little, I don't know, it's kind of six one way, half dozen the other. I think we're going to know, we're going to get some interesting feedback on this one.
Is the job opportunities, could it be off-site if you are somehow, if you're the developer, you're somehow creating job, supporting job businesses off-site somehow?
That would be hard.
Yeah.
Because there's, we lose the benefit of those jobs being in the city if they're off-site, so.
Hello?
Yeah, I, I don't want to support the jobs off-site, and the, my whole, the whole fundamental thing for me is to have people live where they work and work where they live, right?
Right, right, so I'm just wondering, so my question wasn't to say, "Should we make it that way?" My question is more, does this potentially get us that? Seems like it, it's, it's just really unclear to me how, the...
So we're not, we're not counting jobs, that's, that's important for us to be clear, because I don't want to be the job counter, I don't want to go out there and say, "Is there still 20 jobs here?" This is about square footage, and it's about using employee-per-square-footage ratios to generate an expectation of a certain amount of square footage of non-residential space being built as part of a redevelopment project, so.
That's not what it says.
So, I, that's to me, so if we need to massage it, we can.
You know, this one just feels to me like we're trying to solve a problem with one small sentence, and we just haven't really studied it. That's, I mean, it's different to say, "Yeah, we need some wayfinding signs." This one just seems like we're trying to engineer something that we haven't really studied. You know, I think we all feel like we want, don't want to lose some non-residential space, but, and I do too, but I, it's really concerned about, I don't think it's...
What is the outcome that, the undesirable outcome that you worry that this will produce?
Um...
Like, what, what goes wrong, and what does the city look like in five years as a result of implementing this?
You know, that's a good question, but I, I generally don't try to vote, I don't try to support things where I don't think we've, I don't think we've had the conversation and the study that we need to have, to be making such a large policy decision that's here. I think that just feels like a really big discussion to me, and to stick it in this one little sentence when we've only talked about it in this context, just seems odd to me.
So I'm, I brought up the unintended consequences, so I'll, so I, I think, for example, just because it's, you have to have a certain amount of non-residential square footage, I just imagine that it could be a non-residential use that now that the site has built differently, has a different residential feel, and potentially that, that square footage is no longer going to be successful, and would also be low-density, because you're just building. So if you're replacing a large, flat office building, then you have to build another one of those next to your big residential building, potentially it won't do as well, because the context of the neighborhood has changed, and also potentially now we have another low-density building where it could have, it could have potentially turned into something else. I just think that it's restrictive in a way that I don't know that we will get what we want using this, that's, that's my concern.
So I think there's, I think there's two canaries, if you will, for this not working the way we want it to. One is, nobody's building, because this is such an onerous obligation, they go elsewhere. The second is, they go ahead and they build the non-residential space, and it's empty, because it's not in the right space, it doesn't have the right visibility to clients or customers.
Probably not going to build it, if they're going to build it, it's going to be empty from the get-go. Probably not going to happen.
Right, well, so, so, so my, I guess what I would suggest is, right now, our vacancy rates are super low, even for marginal spaces, and even the ones that have been empty for a while, have people looking at them, because there's such a demand for non-residential space here, both commercial and retail, is, it's hard for me to believe that that would be something we would see. I would, I would assume if they build it, people will occupy the space, but I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball.
What do you want to do?
Sounds like it's two to one against. I would ask that, as part of the report, the administration take a look at this question of whether there would be alternate language that would potentially be helpful, and if we could give a quick call to any of our sister cities that we always like to check in with, and see if they have any language that would help us accomplish this.
Thank you, agreed.
Okay.
So, one of the comments was about lighting, and just adding words where appropriate.
So, that one, I guess, I, and I think Commissioner Morgan and myself have very different visions of the way this will work. I mean, I think, I think every property, if it's got, if it's got a public component to it, whether it's a gathering space or a walkway, they should light it, and not, and maybe as appropriate as if there is a public throughway or gathering space. I have, I don't have in my mind a vision of a parcel that's so far off the beaten path that it can be dark at night. I mean, if we're truly looking for a more 24-hour, 24/7-hour, you know, Pickering and Gilman, because these are just in the regional growth center, I don't, it's hard for me to envision that there'd be a property that we wouldn't want lighting, and if we add the "as appropriate," that just adds a level of ambiguity that I think would have a developer say, "Well, I don't think it's appropriate here, so we shouldn't do it." So I don't know, I, I didn't love that suggestion, sorry, Mel.
We also have "as applicable" for all of the...
The whole thing, we do.
That works too. I, I'm, I'm okay with that, because we do have "as applicable."
Yep.
So David's comment on the, if you want to go to Confluence 3.1?
I want to go back to access to creek in Confluence.
Oh, yes, Confluence 2.1.
The comment about, are we, is, are we, is an unintended consequence for...
Provide public access to Issaquah Creek.
Provide public access on every property.
So I would say that if, unless you can't, for whatever reason, I think that having access to the creek is an amenity, and we should be having that happen.
So, I think it's a good comment, because I think it's a real concern, if you have a residential property, is there, are there any residential properties that would, that would possibly apply to? And I don't think it's appropriate to require residential property to provide public access to the creek on their property.
So for non-single-family?
Okay, sorry. Oh, wait a minute.
We could have single-family in Confluence, you could have a bunch of townhouses get built, and yeah, having, requiring there to be public access through somebody's yard to the creek, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, sorry.
So we could say for non-single-family properties, provide public access to Issaquah Creek in support of the green necklace? I don't know if there was an, if there was a commercial, or a retail, or a multifamily project, I think you would want, you'd want the viewing platforms, you'd want the access to the creek on every project, I don't know why you wouldn't.
I have a question, so, public access to the creek, I think we're thinking about it as orthogonal to, to the creek, right, at normal angles to the creek, right? Could this, could someone also meet this by providing access along the creek?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, because that's different, because there's setbacks already, right? So there's, we're creating a space along the creek, and any multifamily housing that's going to come in is going to have to, is going to have to abide by that setback, right? And creating an incentive to build along the creek, I'm, I really like, but I don't, I mean, I, I wouldn't go so far as to say we have to do it, but if I were building a complex, I would actually be much more inclined to provide it along the creek than to the creek.
So how about to or along Issaquah Creek?
You guys, does that make sense?
I mean, I was thinking along anyway, for the most part, because I, I mean, I think the vision is that you...
Because I want to live here long enough to be, sorry, to interrupt you, I want to live here long enough to be able to walk all the way from the south end of town, all the way to the lake, along the creek.
The creek, yes, that would be super awesome.
Right, it means I have to live a long time, but every bit that I can move that closer would be helpful.
So I don't know what, I don't know what kind of opposition we're going to face, because I don't know what the code says in terms of setbacks, and when you can be in certain areas and put a trail in certain areas, I don't know the code, and I don't want to get into it tonight. I'm not opposed to that, if we get what we want, great, but I don't know what we're going to run into.
Okay.
So I think the other thing here is that we, this is for redevelopment, and so when you're redeveloping, you are, or if you have a single-family home and you redevelop, but if you're, if you're an existing property, then this, a single, existing single-family property, this wouldn't apply to you, so we wouldn't get, we wouldn't get any, any non-conforming to this.
Right.
So I, I am in support of or along, because I, I also think part of the Parks Plan vision is that we are able to walk along the creek, and so I, I am in support.
Okay.
And then there was a comment about transit connections?
Yes, a couple, a couple suggestions there, so that's 3.1, right? Provide missing non-motorized connections to facilitate public, I think one was access to transit, and I thought that was a good suggestion.
Transit.
On Newport.
Yeah.
On Newport. And the, and the suggestion that David made, and I liked it, and, but I don't know if you guys agree, so what if it was transit or other destinations? Because there may be another destination that's not transit that makes sense, so for example, if there was a...
Why don't you just take out transit?
Provide missing non-motorized connections to facilitate public access to Newport and Gilman?
Transit's on, we're going to get to the transit on Newport and Gilman.
Is this suggestion just to say, "Provide missing non-motorized connections"?
Let's leave this the way it is, I'm going to leave this as it is, like this. You okay with that?
You're voting?
Yes. Because I think if, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I like leaving transit in there. We mentioned earlier, providing like muscle, why we're, why we're doing things, you know, providing the impetus for some of these things, so when people ask down the road, "Oh yeah, this is about providing access to transit."
Yeah, I like, that's why I liked it too.
So I have, okay, what other ones do we have? What other comments? Vicky?
I think, so one of the comments was about privately-owned public space not being clearly demarcated, and I think that there are examples in Seattle where there's privately-owned public spaces that are very, have very clear signage, and you wouldn't necessarily know that that part of a building was, was available to, for the public, but because there's signage, it makes it clear. And we have wording about signage, and so I wondered if we could address that in our wayfinding signage, and then say, for, for those plazas that we want to be available for the community or for public use, to, to have clear signage to that effect.
And, and so, so are you talking about this one, Vicky, 1.3?
Well, so we, we last time did talk about this one, and I think that this one, the intent is, and that's why it says "for residents and/or employees of the project."
Right.
But if we want to have basically a similar one that's, that is about public plazas and signage for public plazas.
So we could, or you could unpack this a little bit more and say, "Residents, employees, and visitors," if you wanted, because then that implies that it's available to the general community. You know, the question is, you know, I mean, how far down this path do you want to go? Do you want to go down the path where it's similar to Pickering, we know it's private, but it, there's no fences, there's no guard dogs, but it's a little bit awkward to go sit on the picnic tables that are outside their doors? Or do you, do you want a sign that says, you know, it's, you know, that this plaza is open for public use? You know, there's going to be a lot more pushback on the sign, I'll just tell you right now, developers aren't going to like that a whole lot, they're, they would probably be inclined to be able to build something that's accessible to the public, but may not overly feel public.
Well, I think it, it depends largely on the intent, because as you had, as you said, the example with Atlas, there's these spaces that you could go into, but it doesn't feel like you are, it feels like it's facing the building.
Yeah.
So if, if we are okay with that, then we're okay with that. I think if we want to strengthen the language about clearly marking areas that are for the public, then that is not in there right now, so then we, we would need to add that.
So, as Connie mentioned, so, oh, I think it was Connie, so 2.1, we start to talk about those edges, right, in that we said, "Provide outdoor lighting to promote evening activity both onsite and for the public." Okay, so now we're starting to talk about the edges. The question is, so this one, that's our catch-all, "Provide amenities, parks, trails, plazas, outdoor seating, et cetera, that create social opportunities and connect people, people with onsite or adjacent open spaces for residents and/or employees." So we were specific last time about identifying residents and employees. You know, last time we also had "private" before "amenities," and we said, "Let's take that out," but we added this piece specifically for residents and/or employees. We could take that out, and have it just say, "With onsite or adjacent open spaces..." it just say, "With onsite or adjacent open space areas," and support the Green Necklace. Now, the Green Necklace is, I mean, I don't want to say that. So, I don't know. I mean, the question is, is how far do you want to go with this one?
So this is one where I sort of feel like, the way Stacy was talking about the forced maintenance of non-residential square footage. This is an important topic, and I agree with David. There are spaces that feel public and spaces that feel like trespassing. And I feel like we don't have our arms around it right now. This is a topic that we keep coming back to. Every year or two, there's, we have this, the start of a conversation about, boy, this is a complicated problem. And then we say that again, and we'll say it again in a couple of years. So I, I don't know, I feel like at some point, we should try to get our arms around this. And I don't think, and I don't suspect we're going to do it tonight, but.
I agree with you, Tola. I think, I think we're trying, we are, our vision is to create this, you know, amazing green necklace with all these clear public spaces, and we're requiring redevelopment to provide public, you know, parks and spaces, and then, but to also require spaces on private property to be public. I'm not sure how you force that, because if you're a property owner, you know, most of the time, you're going to resist that. And there are good reasons, there's, there are good reasons to. So I'm not sure, because we have such a, you know, a broad plan for all of our, for our Green Necklace, that it's necessary to push how open we want the spaces on private property to be. And if they're inviting, that's one thing, but forcing them to make sure that the public knows that public's invited, I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure I'm there yet.
So, so I think, I guess, you know, there's definitely some, some, a couple of things that have fallen into that category of big lifts versus polishing around the edges. I think most of these are polishing around the edges, you know? Let's get lighting, let's get weather protection, let's get seating, let's make it so that the streetscapes are actually enjoyable and vibrant. The job one, the full public access to all open space areas, those are bigger lifts, and maybe, maybe that's phase two that we look at sometime in the future, or we identify them as ones that didn't make the cut by the committee, and the other four can chime in on whether they think those are worth putting back in. I don't know.
I think I want to go back and read the sections that Connie was talking about, in light of what we're trying to propose in here, and see how that, you know, let me think about it.
So part of the thing, so one of the things that, and this is just for your own, to put in the back of your mind when you get there, is, you know, when you read this, these are very clear for me. These are, do this, do that, and not, and we structured the manual as, these are the encouraged things, and there's a bunch of things listed, and then these are the discouraged things. And it's a little bit fuzzier in terms of kind of how you enforce that kind of thing. So, so that's where, and I mentioned to you guys, there's some overlap with a little bit of this with the urban design manual, but I like that, because I think sometimes it's good to have things in a couple places, as long as they're not contradictory, because then you can point to a couple different things and tell a developer, look, it says it here, it says it here, you're going to need to do this. So when you get there, see if you have the same perspective as I did.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah. How, I would like, in some way, shape, or form, to memorialize the conversation about sometime after this very busy transitional 2018, this conversation about historic preservation.
Did you hear that?
So.
Memorialize it.
I heard the historic preservation piece. Yes.
I don't know how it gets memorializes, memorialized in this, that this conversation occurred in that, it's up. As we get beyond the, as in Maslow's hierarchy of needs.
Yes.
I suspect sometime in 2019, because it's, it's been coming for a while, and we've deferred it.
Yes, I would agree.
Are we ready for a motion to recommend the, to the full council, that they adopt the visions?
Yes.
One favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, my gosh.
Do we have any other, other business? Our next meeting is scheduled for the first Thursday of June, which is our regularly scheduled meeting. Is that?
And I remembered last night that we'll have at least some, the agenda item for the topic we talked last night, the possible future school site will be on our agenda for June. Right, Dan? So, because it's going to both services and Land and Shore. That's what we decided.
Swedish forest site.
So hopefully we'll have Hilltop Swedish Forest Elementary School.
Is it coming to Land and Shore dependent on having an arborist report?
We will have, it will, no, it'll come no matter what. I think, so there'll be some
Kind of depends on what the chair decides. I just wanted to clarify that.
Gotcha.
He's now a voting member. He writes the agenda.
This is the way it works. So, so there will be more information than what you had last night. There will at least be a Geotech report. Hopefully, there'll be a peer, a double peer review of the Geotech report. I would hope that we have some actual solid traffic data. And our arborist will be out onsite probably that week or the next week. So this will probably all kick an extra month. I don't know the answer to that. I think you're going to talk about that at Leadership tomorrow. Depending, based on the information and how quickly it's coming in, that optimistic schedule that we provided might have to go another month. So.
So is there, I would ask liaison Keith to Land and Shore, and also, since we have Council President March here, to talk about, it sounds to me like you're talking about bringing that topic to Land and Shore without the information all being available yet?
Not all of it. There'll be, I expect there'll be some information available for Land and Shore to start to digest.
Oh, committee chair, how do you feel about that?
Well, I would just, I don't know, think about that. It would seem to me that we would bring all the information and.
If it was just going to be one touch, I mean, I think the question is, is if it looks like we're going to have to come to two committees, which I think we might, then maybe we do Geotech and Traffic one meeting, and we do Trees and Views on the other meeting.
Is there even an ID item or an agenda bill? Or is it just?
There's not. We should create an ID item.
We need to discuss.
Are you at Leadership tomorrow?
Oh, I am.
Well, great. Let's discuss it tomorrow morning.
All right.
In a scant 11 hours and 28 minutes?
Yes. Okay, we have nothing further. This is exciting. Is this, your last item under the moratorium is coming to full council?
Yes, I'm going to go home and do the edits, so I can, because you have agenda bills due tomorrow.
Okay, we're adjourned.
All right. Thank you.